All right, welcome to the November 16th, 2015 Milford Board of Selectmen meeting. A little bit different format this evening, our chair is not here. He's tending to his family as a result of his mother dying and I know I speak for the board members and the members, the folks from Town Hall that wish his family the best of this grieving process and send our condolences. We hope that their family works through that, Brian's family works through that. Next, we're going to go to the signing of the warrant and approval of the minutes. Signing of the warrant is first.
I'm the commissioner to approve.
I second, that's unanimous. Next, we have approval of October 19th minutes, I'll separate the two of these, there's actually two groups of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the regular session for October 19th.
Okay, and just, I want to add a comment that I want to modify slightly. Under item 19, where the board accepted the resignation of Assistant zoning officer, and there was dialogue as to the preferences of the board, how we wanted to move forward with consensus to name that replacement. There's a consensus of board to add special requirements to be certified within six months. I want to make sure that's everybody's understanding. And under skills, Spanish slash Portuguese strongly preferred for the candidate. But there was an item that's missing and I wanted to make sure it reflected it. I had requested to advance three names rather than one for this position. I just want to make sure that was your understanding as well, Will.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. Yeah, because actually I think we compared it to the treasurer's race.
That's correct.
Treasurer's race, the treasurer's appointment.
That was the context in which I raised it and requested that three names be advanced. So with that modification, is there anything else?
Nope, that's fine. I just didn't know if I needed to make a motion to accept that or...
Accept it, yeah. Why don't you go ahead and reframe the motion to accept with that modification?
Okay, with the modification that the understanding that three names would be moved forward?
That's correct. And we don't have the required votes to move the minutes of executive session, so we'll hold that off to the next meeting. Okay. That was an executive session for police bargaining, collective bargaining. With Brian absent and Will not participating, we'll wait until the next meeting. Okay, so we've talked about the minutes, we've talked about the warrant that was approved. Next, we have invitation to speak. Chris, would you like to step forward? And for the benefit of the minutes, provide your full name.
Okay.
You all right?
Yeah, should I stand? Can I sit?
Sit, oh, no, no, relax. Be comfortable is right. We just want to make sure you have a microphone so the folks at home can hear you.
Okay, sure. Thanks. So my name is Christine Crean, it's spelled C-R-E-A-N, and I'm at 22 Godfrey Lane in How many questions or how much time do I have? I'm not going to take, I don't have much time.
Well, we're going to give you as much time as you like.
Just a couple of questions, actually, relative to the Spectra pipeline.
Yes.
I didn't have a chance to go to the meeting that was held here, I guess they had an informational meeting a while ago.
It was, it was actually held at the Doubletree, I think, Doubletree, I want to call it Doubletree, is it still Doubletree?
I don't know.
It changes so often.
Yeah, but I wasn't able to make that one, and I did go to one in Walpole. So I just had a couple of questions.
Okay. Whether we can answer them or not?
Right, well, whatever.
We'll see.
Give it your best shot. So did they talk about safety measures regarding the pipeline at all when Spectra gave their presentation?
It really wasn't a presentation...
Both for the workers and/or, you know, the area around the pipeline?
It wasn't a presentation, the format was simply groups of tables.
Okay.
Where different aspects of the pipeline were represented, different subject matter experts were present from the company to try to answer questions. It was really, I would say, more than anything else, it was an introduction meeting. And what I mean by introduction, it was intended to show on a map with GIS mapping and satellite imagery where the, where the pipeline is being proposed.
Okay.
There was some other discussion, some other tables that, but I don't, I wouldn't say that they focused on safety.
So it wasn't, it wasn't a open, like, forum, so you said little conversations going on?
Little conversations by different people at different tables.
My understanding is that we have, we're part of the Northeast Access, goes from Milford to West Boylston, and that's a smaller pipeline. And then we're also kind of part of the other one that's going to Stoughton, that's a, the more main pipeline, and that's a larger pipeline. Do we have a pipeline currently in Milford? Is there any? Because I know they're trying to go along the current...
Towers.
Thank you, that's the word I was looking for. Current towers, and I guess other areas do have old pipelines, right? There was some in 1950s late and then in 1980s, and I guess this is, so I didn't know if Milford currently has one.
I'm going to guess that we do because we feed into, you know, a lot of users of gas, right? So there's got to be a pipeline feeding. I don't know where that is, though.
Okay. All right. That's good. Any conversation at all about, and just a quick question, this is more food for thought if you don't have it. If there were an issue, a problem, leak, whatever, would our fire department be able to respond or would it have to be someone from Spectra? Did you hear anything about that?
We've not talked about that.
Okay.
We've not talked about that.
Okay.
I would imagine, though, that anything within the boundaries of Milford, and in the case of something larger, mutual aid request from another town, if it were in another town, Milford firefighters would be responding if there were some type of gas leak, but I don't.
See, I'm not sure, that's why I had asked, I, and again, I just, it's a learning curve for me on this, you know?
Sure. It's going to be for all of us, yeah.
And I didn't know how, you know, Spectra or Kinder Morgan or whatever the pipelines are, how guarded they are about their property, so...
You know, and it's funny because I did ask at the time, when I was at the meeting, and I've asked Rick to have Spectra come in to discuss some of these, so we could have public information session with question and answers, more the forum that I think you were thinking.
Yeah.
So that some of these questions could be asked. Do you know if there was any other follow-up? I knew they had some work to do before they could, work to do on their application, before they could come out and answer definitive questions on the, so I would expect that information session to be somewhere in the January, February timeframe.
They have more than willing to come in.
Yeah, they, they...
They will come in at the board's...
They have offered, so, you know, we should, we should talk about that again, and if we could make that an agenda item for a future meeting, just so that you get the consensus of the board. I don't see any surprises, but it'd be good to have Brian here for that topic as well.
Yeah. The other questions I had, so when this happens too, was that when I was at the Walpole meeting, you know, Spectra was talking about how this is going to lower gas prices and be a benefit, and the question was posed to them that the gas was, we understand, eventually intended to get overseas, go up through Canada and then be shipped overseas. How would that impact the prices? And Spectra was saying, well, we have no intention of doing that, and then they were asked if another entity used their pipes when they had low usage, how would that impact? You know, we, in other words, Spectra is saying, we're not going to pipe it outside the US, but other entities could.
Okay.
So I didn't, you know, just something to think about, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing is, is that if there were a problem and there was damage, you know, I know it doesn't happen often, but if there was explosion, leak, whatever, what kind of restitution would be paid to people if they were harmed in any way? And then who would be responsible if Spectra, it wasn't their gas going through the pipeline, but it was Kinder Morgan's or someone else's?
Okay.
I was just...
That's really good.
And I think that's it, I think, yep.
So the types of question you have are obviously, you know, people within the gas business, and I think it's up to also this board to become more understanding of the types of issues and challenges. That's exactly why we would have that public forum, and that's exactly why we're asking them to put one together.
Yeah.
So that people have the opportunity to ask questions, and that so that the board also becomes educated, as the community becomes educated.
Making a informed decision on how it's going to impact Milford.
Right. There actually isn't a decision by this board to make.
I know it's, they can do it.
They can do it.
But I know a lot of towns, a number of towns are pushing back on this. Not comfortable, a lot of the people involved, so, you know, there is, there is some, I guess, energy we could put toward it if that were the case, but, I mean, I, I'm not saying it's either bad, I just feel like there's a lot of questions that I have and...
And we should seek to get your questions and other community members' questions answered.
And the other thing I, it's more of a statement, I guess, I just feel very frustrated that I'm hearing that we're going to end up paying for it through assessment, through electric bill, because the electric companies use this too. It just feels, you know, this gas company is making a lot of money, and why are the Commonwealth paying for it?
Yeah, it's my experience to that point, it's my experience that utilities, public utilities, electric, gas, the water company is a good example locally, don't do infrastructure upgrades or changes out of the goodness of their own heart, and those are actually pass-through costs. So any pipe that breaks, any repair that's done are direct pass-throughs to the ratepayers, that's true.
Yeah, so we can always ask why, I mean...
And those are, the amount that they're able to charge go through the Department of Public Utilities and the, I think in this case it would be a federal review as well.
My understanding is Governor Baker's supporting that.
That could be.
Yeah.
And you may find that the three members of this board are supporting it, I don't know, until we get some more information and decide. Or take a posture where we want to ask questions and then maybe try to intervene in some way, at least get our, our issues or concerns known to the, the people who approve the permit, which is federal government.
Yeah, right. So the people that are along the border, they have to get that easement, the Spectra will have to get an easement if it's in a people's property.
If it does, right?
Right, right.
Right now, what they've, what they've defined from the, from the boundaries are, I think, a very wide berth, that in some cases shows that, not that the pipe would go through these people's properties, but the area of study...
They have to get an easement, so it should be right.
Has to be greater. I think what they, I think their intention, though, is to go within the existing boundaries and not have to gain any easement, but I don't know if they're going to have to.
My understanding is because of the size, because they're going to lay another pipeline next to a current one, they're going to have to extend the easement that they have now. A number of people in Midway have already been approached by Spectra.
Okay.
Asking for permission, get the easement, get the, the okay.
The easement or the right to survey the property?
Both.
Okay.
I think it's both.
Okay.
The right to survey the property for the easement, so they're going to have to, you know, I'm sure, survey...
I've read those letters.
Yeah.
The letter does talk about easement, but it isn't a guarantee that an easement would be required, I guess is my caution for you.
Okay. All right. So we don't exactly know where a pipeline may be going, so we don't know who may be impacted.
Actually, we do.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
It's on the...
It's well mapped out.
Oh, okay. All right, that's good. If, would the board be open to hearing any presentation, people about kind of another perspective besides Spectra at some point if...
Well, I know, certainly I'm open to hearing citizens' concerns or thoughts on a particular topic. I can't speak for the board and not having all three members present.
Ask them if that's something, you know, if there'd be somebody at that presentation about concerns that they have, just another perspective.
I wouldn't be in favor of mixing the two topics.
No.
At the same evening?
No, no, no.
What I'd want to do is get through one.
I agree.
See if one does it, see if one informational session completes the task of informing everybody on the topics that they needed to be informed upon. Then from there, I don't see why we wouldn't entertain residents' thoughts.
Considerate if that's something, okay. Fair enough. All right.
Excuse me, can I just add that?
Please, please.
I know one thing, that when we were going through this video GIS mapping timeline and aerial view of where it's possibly going to follow the high tension wires and things like that, but there are individuals there that if you had specific questions, you don't even have to wait for a full forum. We're going to get to the point, if it moves ahead, that there's going to be forums, they're going to have them, we're probably going to, I imagine, want them as well.
Right.
But there's, there's people on staff and some local folks that are working for them as well, that at that meeting told me, if anybody, even on individual basis, has questions, wants to meet with someone, one of those individuals I know quite well that you know. He's a former sheriff of Worcester County, Guy Glotis.
Yeah, okay.
And he's, he's actually been, made himself available.
Working for Spectra?
I believe so, or in some, in some, in some capacity, so that, you know, anything, even on individual basis, that is coming through for citizens' concerns, he said...
Okay, that's good to know.
Let me know, give them my phone number, do whatever they want, and even he'll put you in contact with the right person, so...
Richard was very helpful to give me a website and some phone numbers as well, so... Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris.
Have a good night.
Come on up, Joe. Next, we have a public hearing. Next, we have a public hearing to set the tax, it's a tax classification hearing. Rick, do you have the notice?
I have that one.
I don't have it either.
Yes?
Thank you. So I'll read from the public hearing notice. The Board of Selectmen conduct a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, November 16th, 2015 in Room 3 of the Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street, on the issue of allocating a percentage of the tax levy to be borne by each class of property for the fiscal year 2016. Residents may attend this hearing, speak the issue, or make their opinion known to the board in, to the Board of Assessors in writing at Room 13 Town Hall prior to the public hearing notice. And this, per order of the Board of Selectmen, Chairman Brian Murray, William Buckley, William E. Kincaid, and this was sent out November 5th, 2015, made public. So with that, we'll start the, the public hearing. And Jen, I'll let you begin, introduce yourself and...
Okay. So my name is Jennifer Sklar, and I am the Assessor Administrator here. I've been here exactly one year today, so...
Welcome, thank you.
Happy anniversary to me. I started, the night I started was the classification hearing last year, so... What I'd like to do is just go over a few slides with you. If you have questions, please feel free to stop me at any point, and if I'm boring you, then tell me to just push it along, and I'm happy to do that as well. So these are basically the slides that I'd like to just touch on quickly, and we want to talk about the valuation by class and the different classes of property and what their share is of the levy, the value changes that we're seeing from our revaluation this year as compared to last year, the certification of values and new growth quickly, what the single rate would calculate to be, what our split rate would, would calculate to be and those impacts, what the average tax bills will look like, what our overall levy increase would be and our excess levy capacity, the three exemptions that we need to discuss that we have to certify that are being voted by the Board of Selectmen if you want to offer a residential exemption, small commercial exemption, open space discounts. And then finally, the impact of using that 2.8 million on the tax rate, just to try and get a couple of numbers to show you what an average tax bill is not increasing because of, because of that offset. Okay? So here we have the value by class and the share of the levy. It's broken down residential, we do not have open space, commercial, industrial, and our personal property, which is obviously our contents of businesses in the community, and their share with and without the shift. First, you see with the shift, I'm sorry, without the shift, if we had a single rate, 77% of the tax levy would come from your residential class, as compared to with the same shift that you had in previous years, 1.48, they will only be paying 66% their share of that levy, and the numbers will, will flow through to 100% at the bottom. Commercial with the shift, 17.8%, industrial, 10.23, and personal property, 5.38. Okay. Our value changes from 15 to 16, I broke this down a little bit more than just by commercial and residential. I'm giving you single-family condominiums, two-family, three-family apartments, because they had a little bit more of an increase, I thought was, was noteworthy, vacant land, and then commercial and industrial. These are the values that were cert, average values that were certified by the Department of Revenue as part of our triennial certification this year. The percent changes in that column at the end are for each of those different classes. When we do our public disclosure, we tell you that we have an overall increase in value of 4%, but you can see that each one of those uses is a little bit different. Single-family, 4%, condos, 5%, two families, 4%, three families only, 2%, apartments, like I said, 6.8. So certification and new growth, this was a triennial revaluation. The Department of Revenue, just as an FYI, is likely to go to a four-year revale cycle. The overall effect on value was that 4% increase that we talked about. The 2014 market conditions are how we derive our values. We're looking at sales, rents, property expenses to indicate that economic trend and develop our assessments. Noteworthy construction that contributed to our new growth figure, we have a new assisted living facility this year that came on, we had nine single-family homes, 37 residential lots that were created through recorded plans, 31 new condo units, 70 new personal property accounts, and approximately $5 million in utility growth. So overall, value increase from residential growth, $24,964,600. So that's the value in residential tax-based growth, which calculates a tax to $438,000. The commercial, industrial, personal property growth was $11,498,930, and those taxes would be $347,958. So we have a total growth this year of 786, last year was 876. So we've had, we've had a decline in growth, but still a very solid number. So here is a single tax rate, if there were no shift at all, if, if we weren't going to keep what we've been accustomed to, that tax rate would be $1998 per thousand, that would be for all classes of property, straight across the board. Average single-family home would have a tax bill of $5,296. Average commercial tax would be $16,049. This is the shift. And what I've given is the 1.48, which is what we've, we've had, and what it would be to go either up or down one point from there. So you can see with the, with the 1.48 shift, the residential tax rate would be $17.18 per thousand. If that were to shift down, it'd be $17.24 per thousand, and if it were to go up, it'd be $17.12. On the commercial, below in the first, first two columns again, the tax rate as it, as with the, with the shift would be $29.57. If we only shifted 1.47, that rate would go down to $29.37. If we go up to 1.49, it would change to $29.77. The rest of the numbers going forward are going to show you the different impacts of what that average tax bill and what, what the average tax valued properties would be at different increments. The 2.758 is our average residential, and then if you look down below in the second grouping, 8033 in green is the average on the commercial. So the shift, by shifting 1%, you can see that it's a, you know, $6 increment on the top, whereas it's a $100 increment on the bottom.
Any questions?
How are we doing?
Oh, this is great.
Are we okay?
Yeah.
All right. Slow me down if, if we need to. All right. Average tax bills. Single-family tax bill, assuming we have a 1.48 shift, we're getting a tax rate of $17.18, we'd have a tax bill of $4,738 this year. The prior year, using last year's rate and last year's average value, was $4,006.51. So that's a tax increase of $87 on your average single-family. Now clearly, and I'll point this out now, and I think it's in the memo as well, averages are just averages, right? We know. So, you know, if your home is worth more, the increase is more, if you're, you know what I mean? So you're going to see some shift from that, these are just to try and at least give you some feel for what each of these uses will experience. Condos, last year's average tax bill, $34.74, this year, this year, $34.74, excuse me, last year, $33.59, so they're going to see 115 increase. Two families, $4,039.18, very close, $82 increase. Three families will actually probably not see any change at all. Okay? So it's, here it's showing a $7 decrease. Commercial properties, we have an increase of $339, and industrial, $536. And then on the end is, that's the percent change of the dollar differences that we're discussing, so they range from a negative number to, to 3.5 almost percent. These are just overall statistics, the total taxable value of the town is $3,706,36. Last year it was $2,872,648. So we have a 4.69% actual increase in our taxable value. The levy went up 2.3% from last year. Last year was $58,739,318. This year, we're at $60,88,241. The tax rate is actually going to decrease by 2.15% on the residential and 2.3% on the Excess levy capacity, last year was $1,854,001.55. This year, excess levy capacity, $2,806,156, I'm sure that number looks fairly familiar. Excess levy capacity is obviously in direct relation to the town meeting vote to offset the tax rate by the 2.8. I don't know how much you want to get into these three topics, which are the exemptions, the residential exemption is offered.
This one, it's up to Will, I've heard this a few times.
Yeah.
But this one primarily talks to coastal communities who have a large number of rentals driving up property values, and it's a, it's a special exemption that's allowed to those, if I characterize it correctly.
Yeah.
It's not something that Milford has entertained, but Will, I don't know if you...
No, I'm, I'm aware of it as well.
Okay, good.
Yep.
And these are those communities, as you can see, they're either all clustered around Boston, or they are coastal communities that have rental homes.
Right.
So they're trying to give a benefit to their, their, their year-round resident.
And that's great.
Yeah. And the small commercial exemption, I believe they did a presentation on this last year or the year before?
I think it was the year before.
Was it the year before? Okay.
That's my recollection.
So the, the state on this actually gives us a list of, of businesses, are you familiar with this one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So they give us a list of businesses that have 10 or fewer employees, and basically it's a, if the property has these types of businesses in their space, they don't have to be the owner, the property has to be valued at, at less than a million, then the town would have the ability to offer them some tax relief for housing these small businesses. There are only 10 out of 351 towns that offer this exemption, and it, it, well, all it does is offset the rate for the commercial industrial property anyways, so you give 48 taxpayers a tax break, and the other 300 and, how, 659 of them have a higher tax rate to make up that share.
And in a, is it still true that in a multi-tenant building?
Yes.
The benefit goes to the landlord?
It does.
Okay.
It does. And not only that, but...
Not to the individual businesses?
No, it doesn't. It's for the property owner. And also, if there are, say there are three tenants and two qualify, but the third does not, then...
You can't do it.
Right, or they would get a proportionate share.
All right.
Yeah. And the open space discount is offered, but the town does not have any properties that are classified as open space, so it's basically just a vote to say you're not going to offer a discount for something we don't have.
Right, we've got a great deal of open space.
But not classified as such.
But not, right.
Yeah, right, right, right. And then the result of the 2.8 million to reduce the tax rate. So for example, single-family home with the offset, $47.38, without that offset, $49.59. So the actual tax increase that we talked about before on a single-family is $87. Had they not voted the 2.8 million, their tax increase would have been $221. So, so there's $134 of tax increase, it's not a savings, because it's still going up, but it's...
But it is a savings.
But it is a savings. I just want to make sure we're clear that it, it goes up and it doesn't go up so significantly. So there's, there's a, a big reduction to the impact to the taxpayer there. Condos, the savings, $47, two families, where the savings are 104, three families... Three families, two oh nine. Commercial, seven sixty-nine. Industrial, eleven hundred twenty-one dollars. So there's some significant savings.
That's great.
Yeah. Are there any questions or any, anything that I didn't cover that, I know it's a lot of numbers?
So I just want to go back to a slide. I think it's one slide.
Yeah.
It talks about savings with and without. And what I've got is, I want to make sure I understand it.
Sure.
We've never represented it this way, so I like seeing it presented in different ways. And this is helpful. So to the single family.
Yep.
The tax bill or the change without the two point eight million dollars would have been two hundred and twenty-one dollars. You said that's one thirty-four, same math that I have, right? It's a hundred and thirty-four dollar difference. It's actually going up eighty-seven.
That's right.
So the, so the net savings, or the net amount that it's not being increased is a hundred and thirty-four dollars.
That's right.
Okay. I've always understood it to be eighty-seven, and I don't know why the benefit to be eighty-seven is actually one thirty-four. Okay.
Yeah.
That's helpful. That outlines it.
Yeah. And this is, again, it's using average values.
Yeah.
You know, so there could be some-
Bigger homes would receive less of a-
Right.
Benefit, and smaller homes would get an increase.
And when these numbers were being run, they were probably being run when the values had not been increased by four percent. Because we were in a revale. So when you guys are running these through to get ready, prepare for town meeting, or, you know what I mean? You may not have had a true value to assign to that rate. Yeah. Yep, absolutely.
So the commercial benefit, that's interesting, right? The commercial benefit is seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars difference. So their, their, their burden is being reduced by seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Yep.
And industrial, it's one thousand, one hundred and twenty-one. So they receive the lion's share, having paid, paid in the lion's share of the taxes.
That's right.
Okay. It's proportional. Okay. Great job. Great presentation.
Thank you. So I have the original document that needs to be signed so that I can go online once you take your votes tonight.
Okay.
So I'll take those signatures back with me if I can get them from you. And I'll do that after you guys take your votes.
Okay.
Jen, I'd just like to say one thing, Bill.
Please, yeah. I was going to go to you.
The bill, the, the board unanimously decided, voted to go to, to split.
Great.
You know what I'm saying? Yeah.
Yeah, they, we had our board meeting right before this. So the board is, is in support of the one point four eight shift as it's been proposed in the past.
Okay. Remaining with that.
Yep.
Joe, any thoughts?
Yes, thank you.
Good to hear from you.
The presentation that was made by Jen, and she's the committed, her and her staff have done an outstanding job. I mean, even I can understand this. I just wanted to state that fact, that she and her staff did an outstanding job this year.
They did, and I'd agree with you and to also give some credit to the board to finding a way to find the right people to put in the right jobs to make sure that the work gets done well. And that, we've talked about the, the culture within that office, and that's also reflection on you folks, so.
I'd just like to add one more.
Please.
The reason we've got such a good administrator, we have good assistants, or Priscilla, who knows everybody in the area, who recommended two or three names that we came up with.
Yep.
Good, good job. Okay, so at this point, I'd take a motion, accept a motion to set the tax rate for this year.
Sure. I'll make a motion to maintain the dual tax rate and set the rate as supported by the Milford Board of Assessors.
At one point four eight.
At one point four eight, at a shift of one point four eight.
Okay. I'll second that. That's unanimous.
I'll also make a motion to not grant a residential exemption for properties that are the principal residence of the owner.
I'll second that, and that's, that's unanimous.
I'll also make a motion to not grant a small commercial exemption.
Seconded. That's unanimous.
And finally, I'll make a motion to not grant an open space discount.
I'll second that, and that's also unanimous. Okay, and you need a document signed from us? Oh, you were in the, you were doing all the presenting, so.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm, I think I'm going to have a coughing fit. You know, like, you get a tickle in your throat?
Yeah, have an Altweit.
That's why I keep on, that's why I bring them.
Okay, where would you like it signed?
Here, in here, please. We'll be all done. Thanks, Liz. You're great.
Good job.
That went off without us.
Especially my first year, I didn't know if a, nice job.
Good job.
Certainly is. Wow.
Tough job, boy.
That took a little time. I know, right?
I should, I should have used your blueprint.
Whoa, falling off the scent.
Too late now.
It is. You got it.
Actually, one for federal documents, you can't.
Right. Right, gentlemen? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
You're driving down East Walnut Street, it's a little smoother now.
Yeah, depending what side of the road you're on.
Good to see you again, Jen. You have what you need, let us know.
Yes, thank you very much.
Great job.
Hi, Mr. De Niro.
Good to see you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Put an open, put a residential. Where do you, where do you assess the residential?
You have, you would have to, the board would have to actually decide to classify property that way. And then they can set their own criteria. The state actually allows the board to do that. They would say-
What are you doing, making these?
I think we'd say, we're going to come to say, any kind of spile, and open and mental conditions, those could be the words, criteria.
This is also a public hearing, so a notice went out on the Casa Brazil? Individually? All right. I noticed somebody walked in. So there was somebody different that walked in. I just want to see if they had a comment. The last topic was a public hearing. Did you have any comments towards that public hearing? Tax classification? Okay. Okay, all right. See, it's easy to know nobody's going to come in to talk about, on a public hearing unless somebody walks in, then. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the Casa Brazil hearing for liquor violation. And I'll read from the public notice that went to the owner of Casa Brazil. Dear Mr. Di Olivera, please take notice, the Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing pursuant to general law, chapter one thirty-eight, section sixty-four, and other applicable law at seven thirty PM, we're a few minutes late, in room three of the Milford Town Hall on fifty-two Main Street, Milford, Mass. on November sixteenth, twenty fifteen. At which hearing, the Board of Selectmen will consider whether to modify, suspend, or revoke a license issued to your establishment pursuant to said chapter one thirty-eight. The reason for the contemplated action is that on September seventeenth, twenty fifteen, at or about nine PM, an employee or agent of your establishment did sell alcoholic, an alcoholic beverage to a minor without any inquiries to identification, all in violations of laws of the Commonwealth and the rules, regulations related to the sale of alcoholic beverages. You are advised, you have the right to attend the meeting, to present evidence on your behalf, and, and to be represented by counsel. That went out by the town administrator on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and was sent to Casa Brazil owner, Mr. Di Olivera. Great. And you're Mr. Di Olivera?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good to, good to meet you. Chief, we'll let you begin with the facts and information.
On Thursday, September seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, Detective Mike Mastroianni and Detective Carl Osuza conducted alcohol compliance checks at twenty-eight businesses that are licensed to sell alcoholic beverages. A twenty-year-old male was utilized as an undercover operative during the operation. At nine PM, the undercover operative went into Casa Brazil Restaurant at one twelve Main Street, ordered a Bud Light beer. The bartender, who was later identified as, as a woman who worked for Mr. De Silva, served the alcoholic beverage without asking for identification, and the undercover operative paid three dollars with a marked ten-dollar bill that he had received from the detectives. The bartender provided the undercover operative the seven dollars and change. The detectives entered the premises, spoke with the bartender about the violation. She was apologetic while indicating that it was very busy, that she overlooked the fact that he was underage. The detective's advisor, that Mr. De Silva would be receiving a notice from the Board of Selectmen about this hearing. I will say, Mr. De Silva has reached out to me several times since then, and expressing to me, you know, his dismay that it took place and, and things that he had in place. It's one of those situations where, you know, as she said, it was probably busy, and she overlooked it and should not have. He recognizes that it's a very serious issue. You know, it's a compliance check, and our goal, you know, as you know, we advertise compliance checks consistent with the regulations. We, we go out and put in the newspapers, on the radio, we let people know, we're coming. We want you to pass. The goal is that everyone passes. And periodically, we'll have one, usually generally one that doesn't, and even that's becoming rare. So that's the circumstances here. I, I, I looked at my files, I, I talked to the town administrator, Rick Valani. He had checked the town selectmen's files to see if there were any other violations as it relates to the liquor license. He, he could not find any. He asked me just to double-check, you know, given my tenure, and, and I went through my files, and, and I don't have violations for this particular establishment. It, it did change hands. I'm not sure.
Yeah, we've been there for fourteen years.
Yeah, Mr. De Silva, so.
Okay.
Those are the circumstances.
Okay, thank you, chief. Mr. Di Olivera, do you have any comments or?
Yes, I'm really upset with this, because we've been there for fourteen years already. We never had any problem. And like you said, the young lady, she was working part-time, she is working part-time, and she, we training her, and by big mistake that happened. And what I'm going to do now, I'm going to put her, just to clean the tables, because I don't want to, I, I don't like she to do that kind of job anymore. I'm moving her to another spot.
Yeah, I would guess, of all the employees that you have, she's now the one that is absolutely certain to ask for an ID the next, next time. That would be my bet.
And what's freaking me out, I've been there for four months, because we went through the reception, now things getting better. For four months I'm here, and I'm telling whoever they always check the ID, don't play with that, don't play that. Guess who, who did it? And sometimes they're like, ah, you're concerned too much, but you had the concern.
Yeah, it's your license.
Yeah, it's my license.
So I, I appreciate it, and, you know, the, the thing that's significant to me, I'll go to the, Will in a second, the thing that's significant to me is not that this was just a compliance check, because, and we've talked about this in the past, but the history of the restaurant is important as you go forward and have issues like this. There can be small bumps in the road, or there can be a pattern. That's why I'm sometimes reluctant to establish rules for when we're going to do what in terms of responding to violations. But I think the chief represented that, and it's my recollection as well, at least in the ten years that I've been on this board, there haven't been any issues with your establishment. And that's significant when things like this come up. But I'll go to Will.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I don't have to echo all my colleagues' comments, but the chief often advertises that these are not meant to be punitive, they're educational, and that's what it is. So again, with the history being of board, I don't certainly have, and I won't be looking for anything punitive, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Okay. You know, I just have one question. Short of that employee, is there anything else, you know, the change that you've talked about, and what responsibilities that employee's going to have, is there anything else that might be different within your establishment? Or, or do you think you have a good handle on it? This is a one-off issue?
She's the only one who's new in there. The other guys in there, they worked with me for seven, eight years, nine years, so they know.
They know the routine.
And they know I'm very pick about it.
Okay.
That's why we in there fourteen years, we never had any problem.
Okay.
And finally, that happened.
Yeah, I'm not going to ask you to fix a lot, because, again, your history and record speaks for itself.
And that week, that week, I was telling who all the time, always check the ID, don't play with that. That's very serious. Because I know in Florida, they take you, they arrest you right, and they didn't take you. Here, they don't do that, right?
Well, it's still possible, I guess.
But in Flor, I told her, I said-
We're kinder and gentle.
Yeah, we're kinder and gentle.
Because I, I have a business in Florida, too.
No kidding.
And, and there, they arrest you right there. And I, I told her, I said, you're very lucky, I don't know why they-
Hopefully, hopefully it doesn't come to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Human error.
So is there a motion, Will? I'm going to guess that consistent with the last time we did this, is that we look at it as an opportunity to learn from this. And I think we issued a warning to the restaurant, a verbal warning, a written warning, but no, no other action against-
Yeah, whatever was consistent with that, but that's, I mean, I can certainly make a motion for a, a letter, but-
A motion for a, a letter of warning, but no suspension of any kind.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, no suspension or modification. The, the motion is to send you a, a warning, letting you know.
Thank you.
And look forward to your continued business and continued diligence in the future. With that, that's unanimous. Okay. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you, chief.
Take care.
Why you have me? Do you want to?
I'm guessing that I know the party's here, there's nobody here in a public hearing that would like to comment on the topic.
Did you have?
Well, it was a public hearing, so I just wanted to make sure, to see if there's any public, you know, from the public. Go ahead.
Freddie won't speak. Do you have anything on that camper? Did you touch on it? Do you want to touch on it?
You know-
Before I head for the door.
Can you wait eight minutes? I know. I, I do want to get to the other public hearing, that's all.
They're, they're going to wave, they're going to wave.
I'm going to guess.
They want me to leave.
They do.
Wonderful.
You're right, I was, I was.
Now we're taking advantage of our friends.
All right. They want to relinquish their time.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, so there, let me, let me just introduce the topic. I had an opportunity to speak with the chief about a camper. I had gotten a complaint about a camper that was residing on Beaver Street, just opposite the exit from what was formerly the Kmart Plaza. It was adjacent to the La Quinta Hotel, and the chief looked into it and subsequently has information, so this is new to Will. Will, Rick has been involved, because I sent Rick a note as well, but I'll let you-
Right, so I, I spoke to Rick as well Saturday, and John Erickson, and then communicated with John by email today on this point. As you know, we, we went there back in October, October the twentieth. Police responded, same complaint, and, but the vehicle was parked on the La Quinta lot. It was just adjacent to the roadway. Officer Stanley went there, he spoke with them. The management indicated that the people that owned the camper did have rooms, or a
The management indicated that the people that own the camper did have rooms, or a room at the hotel, and that they had no problem with the vehicle being there. It's a single vehicle, it's not a trailer.
Right, this type of vehicle that.
Right, it's a mobile home.
Mobile home, yeah.
It since has moved from the lot to the dirt area across from the entrance to the Kmart, as was indicated by Selectman Buckley. So, we went down and took a look at it, we had some difficulty getting the plate back from the registry and it was simply, when they entered the plate number, I ran the plate number, it wouldn't come back. And it's because the registry had the two-letter C A for camper prior to the registration number and entering it into the computer, which is an anomaly for us. But we did check that today. John Erickson sent me the actual registration, it's valid until the end of this month, and which time, you know, they would have to renew, like any of us, renew our registration. So, the vehicle is properly registered. I know from enforcement side zoning, you know, if it was unregistered, then John can deal with it as an unregistered vehicle. From the policing side, it's our understanding that the vehicle is on La Quinta property and that's what I was told again, from police officer from the management, that they own that strip of land. John, I know, is gonna take a look at maps to see if that's the case and then make a determination from there as to whether or not the vehicle is on their land and can it be there. The last question was, can people live in the mobile home? And I'm told, I don't enforce that particular bylaw, I'm told no unless they have a special permit. I know that we've had some homes that have had fires and they put trailers on the property temporarily while they rebuilt. So, I know he's looking at all those different issues. From our side of it, the vehicle is properly registered. If it is on the land that they own, then they're not a trespasser. So, from the police side of it, there's really no enforcement issue for us.
More of a zoning and building enforcement.
Yeah, it may very well be. If, but if they're not living in the vehicle without the permits, I mean, the vehicle's properly registered, it can be there. So, it's an issue of, we understand that people are looking at it and.
And Rick also had an update, I think, from zoning and enforcement.
Yes, so John did go out there Saturday. There is a family that was staying at the hotel. The owner gave them permission to put the camper on their property. As far as we know, no one is living in the RV. Chief said it is registered through November thirtieth. The latest, John went out and spoke with them again today. The manager of the hotel indicates that the individuals living there are at the hotel, not in the camper. They're likely to stay there through November nineteenth. He did indicate to me, though, if they were to try to stay there past November thirtieth, when the registration expires and it's not renewed, then the owners will have the RV removed. He doesn't expect that to happen. John did inform the manager that no one can be living in the RV. And if he is gonna have permission to put the RV on the hotel property, obviously it must be properly registered. So, he did follow up Saturday and then he followed up again today.
Okay, and I would have thought that there would be a requirement by the hotel to have parking confined to what was presented as part of the site plan and that there wouldn't be necessarily vehicles around the lot and around the fence. So, are we saying they're in conformance with the site plan or not?
They may not be in conformance with the site plan, I think it might have been an issue where there's an issue, he had to try to help out his family. The owner of the hotel said he did not realize that possibly the RV was unregistered and then he gave permission on that basis.
And it's not, so we know that not to be the case.
It is properly registered.
It is properly registered, through the end of this month.
Right, so the question I have is it, is the vehicle where it's parked in conformance with the hotel's approved site?
I mean, I would have to double check on that.
Would you please?
My understanding it is, but I don't wanna represent that, I'm a hundred percent positive.
Yeah, it would be my understanding, at least.
It would behoove them to move the vehicle into the lot.
Into the lot, right.
That's the bottom line.
I think that's what they're gonna end up.
Controversy would go away.
The controversy goes away. I think the issue is sometimes the running of that generator, for whatever reason, to keep things, whatever, is gonna be a problem for residents of the hotel.
It's attracting attention.
Yeah, it's attracting attention, it's becoming a nuisance. I wanna know if it's in full compliance with the site plan. That the planning approved for the hotel. And if it's not, we oughta move it.
Relocate.
And request them to get it moved.
And the hotel manager has been very cooperative.
Okay.
Saturday and then again today.
Because it's getting a lot of attention in the community.
Yeah, they've been very upfront with us, I mean, our dealings with them.
And people were speculating, since it's been there three or four weeks, people are speculating that it was left over from the carnival.
Well, that's what they believed initially and that's the way the calls came into us initially, back in October. I mean, as Rick indicated, this is a family that has gone through some difficulties and in fact, the hotel is being compensated from a church that's trying to help this family rebuild things. So, you know, they're in a tough circumstance, they've been nothing less than cooperative in all of our dealings. It's, you know, as I said, it would behoove the hotel to simply move.
Move it in their lot.
Move the thing back into their lot.
That's likely what will happen if they do not vacate as originally planned, which would be three days from now.
Okay. All right, thank you, Chief.
Have a great night.
Thanks.
Well, he's given up all your time, he's taken all your time. Next, we have Water Street Meat Market LLC and a liquor license request. I'll read from the notice of public hearing before we have Counsel Pettenari representing the owners. Town of Milford provides public notice, the Board of Selectmen hereby gives notice, has received an application from Water Street Meat Market LLC doing businesses Water Street Meat Market for retail package, wine and malt license at Three Water Street, Milford, Mass. The proposed manager is Lisa Canaro. The premises includes retail space on the first floor, approximately twelve hundred square feet, consisting of one large room, approximately thirty-three feet by thirty-six feet, with a main entrance and exit in front of the leased premises and an exit at the rear, together with a small office, one restroom and approximately eight hundred and sixty square feet of basement storage. Pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 138 as amended, the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on said application on Monday, November sixteenth, twenty fifteen, at seven thirty-five in Room Three of Milford Town Hall, fifty-two Main Street. This is per order of the members of the Board of Selectmen. Okay, with that, I'll introduce Attorney Pettenari and let you begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen. I am Ernie Pettenari, I'm a lawyer in the town of Milford, my office is at twelve Main Street. And with me tonight are Fred and Lisa Carnero, who I think you all know. We started this process almost a year ago. We went to the annual town meeting in May and we secured the unanimous approval of the town meeting to seek a license to be issued for their use in connection with their operation of the Water Street Meat Market. They have been in operation on those premises for almost two years now. They've invested a great deal of effort and energy and some money in getting those premises to the point where they're a vital contributing member of the mercantile establishment in the town of Milford. They determined about a year ago that having the ability to sell malt beverages and especially specialty wines in the Portuguese market community would be an advantage to them. Town meeting agreed, we've made this application in furtherance of those processes. I think you know the families, I think you know the establishment. It is, as it's described in the application, about thirteen hundred square feet on the ground level of Three Water Street. It's got about eight hundred and sixty square feet of storage space in the basement. Their intention is to dedicate approximately a hundred square feet of shelving, again, mostly for the specialty wines that they intend to sell. And I can tell you from my experiences with them over the last year, the character of these people and the kind of things that they do there, they're people of their word, they're people who are hardworking, they are a credit to the mercantile community of Milford. I'm proud to say that I'm here with them tonight. We're here to answer any questions you might have, but we're hopeful that you'll agree and that you'll vote favorably on their application.
Yeah, before I turn it over to Will, one of the things I wanted to clarify, this is a three-step process, right? So, the first step was to approach town meeting. And the second step in that process was to go through the legislative process in Boston to have that home rule petition approved.
Correct.
So, it's gone through town meeting approval, it's gone through legislative approval, and this is the third and last step. Obviously, there's the wait.
The A B C C, but yes.
The A B C C and final stamp. And I don't expect there'd be any issues from the A B C C. Okay, I just wanted to clarify where we are in the process. Will?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions. As you know, Lisa and I grew up together, it's a great family, Fred's a great guy, they run a great store, I hope to think I'm a loyal customer, I try to buy as much as there as I can. I know my wife loves it, so I think this is a smart next step, so congratulations.
You know, it also makes sense to me and given that town meeting has already approved it and given that the business has been doing well, I've also been there, I have to comment right away on how clean the business is, it's really amazing. So, it reflects on you and that's a good reflection. I don't have any concerns either, so is there a motion?
Yeah, so moved, I'll make a motion to approve the beer and malt liquor license?
Retail package, wine and malt.
Okay.
With that, I'd second that and approve that, so that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick, you want me to stay?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
If that's okay, we could take you.
Why don't we handle second issue for Attorney Pettenari, let him move on. We're gonna jump to new business, which is item F three on our agenda for people following along. I don't want anybody to think I skipped over a step in the public hearing process. The public hearing process allows people to speak on the topic, there is nobody present, so it was clear that there was nobody here to speak on this topic, but I just wanna note that in each of the cases, there was nobody there. Okay. Ernie, you had a recapture agreement, why don't we jump to that?
Okay. The recapture agreement in question involves my cousin, my, actually, the child of my father's cousin, Joni Barlow, who is Joni Bonina now, is my cousin. She owns property in Milford at Six Rogers and I never know if it's Avenue or Street, but it's one of them. She had a recapture agreement for some home improvements that were done. She's had some health problems and she's looking for the assistance of the town so that she can make some changes in the ownership of her property and give her son an interest in the property during her lifetime. In attempting to get that work done, we discovered that the recapture agreement in question's got another four and a half years to run.
Just about, yeah.
And rather than pay off the amount that would have been called for in the recapture agreement, which frankly would be an unbearable hardship for her at this point, Attorney Vilani and I have had a couple of conversations about the possibility of agreeing to have Joan's son simply assume the liability on the recapture agreement in the event the property was to be sold at any time before its originally intended expiration date in two thousand and twenty, that the town would then be reimbursed. And she and the family are perfectly willing to accept that as a term if the transfer can be made, subject to the recapture agreement, that's perfectly acceptable. So, I'm basically here asking for the permission of this board to allow for that to happen so that we can make those arrangements for her.
Okay, and I think I understand everything that you just presented in addition to your note that you provided to the board and to Rick. So, I wanna begin with the fact that Joan Barlow is also a member of my extended family and I say that because she is my son's, son-in-law's aunt.
Correct.
Okay. And while that doesn't specifically meet the requirements of conflict with the town in terms of immediate family, being my son-in-law's aunt, I did just wanna make public disclosure of that. Having said that, are you asking that the recapture agreement be subject to the transfer of the property or contingent upon the?
I'm asking actually for the opposite.
Go ahead.
I'm asking for the board's permission to allow the transfer of the property and to allow the recapture agreement to remain vital and simply to make the transfer subject to the continued existence in the terms of the recapture agreement.
Okay, okay. And the intention is to transfer to her son?
Correct, again, not an out-of-the-family transfer.
Right, right.
This would only be a transfer for no consideration, this is not intended to be a sale. And to the extent that anybody secures a gain, it's really a peace of mind gain, there's no other, no other gain that's going in any direction.
No, and what you're, so what you're proposing takes care of the board's obligations in terms of protecting the town in the extent that there is a borrower, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay. I don't have any more questions, I'll go to Will.
I'm gonna make this real easy. Mr. Chairman, this is just the right thing to do for a human being, so I'm gonna make a motion to support the recapture.
Proposal.
Proposal.
Okay, and I would second that and that's unanimous.
Thank you very, very much, gentlemen, that's much appreciated.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next, we have town administrators' report.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Yes, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number of items, just some quick matters. Just a reminder, town hall will be closed one P M. on Wednesday, November twenty-fifth, day before Thanksgiving, we will reopen on Friday, November twenty-seventh. I do want to remind everyone that as we approach winter, the total prohibition of overnight parking from December first through March fifteenth has been replaced with a prohibition of parking only when an emergency ban is declared. The complete amendment is posted on the town website for one's review. That is just something a little different this year. A follow-up on the national grid work along the Upper Charles Trail, they will be performing maintenance work on their line that runs parallel to the Upper Charles Trail. Most will be done, again, from pads that are close to but off the bike path. In recognition of requests from the Board of Selectmen, they'll have a safety spotter on site. They anticipate short times when the, there'll be a need to restrict bike and foot traffic while equipment will be driven on and off the bike path to access the pad locations. They will then use escorts and police details to effectuate this. The work will be done from seven A M. to five P M. from November ninth to November nineteenth and from December fourteenth to December twenty-fourth. Update on the Godfrey Brook project, the culvert installation work at Main Street has been completed, all new concrete channel walls have been poured, backfilling around the new structure is complete, utility relocations and repairs to Route sixteen have been completed as is final paving, new sidewalks and curbing. Cleanup activities at the Main Street fencing area will be completed this fall. The planting of trees will not be completed until the spring. The sewer line relocation at Congress Terrace is complete and eighty percent of the new culvert box has been installed and backfilled. We expect the project to be completed by the end of the year, except for the spring planting. In addition, the project is out of budget. Finally, as you know, we have received the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state under the Environmental Bond Bill, this money will be applied to the current phase of the project. Hopefully, that will leave approximately fifty thousand dollars left to be taken care of in the future. I just want to, again, reiterate our thanks to Senator Fatman and Representative Fernandez for their efforts in helping to secure these funds for the town. I wanna thank Boy Scout Troop One Eighteen and their troop leader, Jim Durell. They have volunteered to do cleanup of those areas the selectmen have designated for the placement of temporary signs as their community service project and it'll be an ongoing project, so nice gesture from them and their efforts are gonna be most appreciated. Two other things, the Purchase Street School, the chimney at the Purchase Street School has been repaired, the next part of the project will be to replace the boiler, we'll be seeking bids for the boiler in the near future. And then finally, a notice from the town library director, Sue Edmonds, the town library will be closed on Saturday, December twenty-sixth and Saturday, January second, at two thousand sixteen. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, Will?
Mr. Chair, just in, when the town administrator mentioned that town hall offices are closed on the twenty-fifth, obviously the day before Thanksgiving at one P M.
Yes.
I usually do office hours the last Wednesday of each month, I'll be doing it this Wednesday. The rooms all booked and everything.
Yes, no, that's fine, we're all set with that.
We did that for the whole year, but I just wanted to let people know and I'll try to have it on the radio tomorrow and Wednesday as well, but I'll be here in Room Two from six thirty P M. to eight in, on this Wednesday, the eighteenth.
Okay.
Okay, and you said, Rick, the Godfrey Brook final paving was done. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding which final paving, because the last time in front of Franks, it looked like there was still a section of paving that there was a big dip.
Okay, that is supposed to be done, I will double check on that.
Yeah, it does, it wasn't Sunday, let me say that.
Okay. Actually, that might have been done today, but let me double check.
Okay. So, that's the town administrator's report. Old business, is there any old business that you'd like to bring up, Will?
Not tonight.
I don't have any old business either. Under new business, item F one for new business, Milford Public Schools surplus property. Milford Public Schools and specifically Superintendent Bob Tremblay has sent a notice to Rick and the Board of Selectmen asking that a number of items be identified as surplus in accordance with Chapter Thirty-B, Section Fifteen, and to be disposed of following those Massachusetts general laws. He notes, please be advised, Milford School administrators and town hall heads have all been afforded the opportunity to review the inventory with Principal Craig Consigly and have walked the facility to claim items in anticipation of need prior to the closure and opening of the existing, of the new Woodland School, all claims and items be delivered to their respective schools. And now this is the remaining items to be identified as surplus. I don't have any intentions of reading this entire list, but I will selectively pick out a few items. They are things like student chairs, student desks, adult chairs, adult desks, various tables. As you would expect, there would be shelving, whiteboard, chalkboards, easels, conference chairs, conference table, those types of things. So, Will, if there's, if you have a motion, we'll entertain a motion now.
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept the Woodland Elementary School. Sure, I'll make a motion to accept the Woodland Elementary School furniture equipment to be declared surplus property.
Okay, as provided. On his memo of October 19th, I'd second that, and that is unanimous. Okay. Next item on the agenda is traffic supervisors and reappointments. As we do annually, we approve the traffic supervisors. Will, if you'd like to read the list.
Sure, in the form of a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that we reappoint the following traffic supervisors. Peggy Farrell, Mary Jo Bentley, Gloria Lenell, Don Carberry, Anne Rokanti, Sue Kozlowski, Suzanne Lewitnik.
You did better than I would have on that.
Sharon McLean, Frances O'Neill, Donald Acavelli, Larry Louden, Donna Mason, John Sharillo, Donna Lane, Paul Davidson.
And that's seconded and unanimous?
I'll also make a motion to appoint the following substitute traffic supervisors. Michelle Abenosi, Richard Brigholi, Michael Mobilia, Manny Fonseca, Christine Wispansky, and Loris Connolly.
That's seconded and unanimous. Since we don't have anybody here from Milford TV, we haven't put anybody out of their way, what I'd like to do is hold off the Milford TV contract. It's not time-sensitive. We can allow Brian to participate in it. The one thing I would ask is while we have the opportunity, I'd like this, I'd like to take, you know, 20, 30 minutes to, one, acknowledge the work that they've done in the five years since we entered into this agreement. But I'd also like to take the opportunity to meet with the Milford Community Media President or members of the board to talk about what the next five years is intended to bring and where they see this going. In principle, I have no issues at all with resigning the agreement. But I'd like to hear a little bit about where we're going in the next five years.
They're actually finishing their annual report too, so that will be coming up also, so if you wanted to combine that, but yes.
Agreed. We're not time-sensitive on this.
We are not. No, we are not.
Will, any thoughts?
No, that's perfect.
Okay. All right, next we go to item five, new business, dog hearing officer recommendations. So we had Milford Animal Control versus Amy Reed. Hearing was held May 14th, 2015 pursuant to general laws, Chapter 140 and 157, upon the written complaint of Rochelle Thompson, Milford Animal Control Officer. And I'll read from the findings of the facts. Based on the credible evidence presented, the hearing officer found the following as facts. Amy Reed resides at 24 North Street, Number 3, in Milford, and is the owner of a German Shepherd male dog, age 3, named King. Ms. Reed, on various occasions, I'm sorry, item number two. Ms. Reed, on various occasions from September 29th, 2015, until October 7th, 2015, left King outside all day and a portion of the night tied to and unattended. During that time period, on those various occasions, King barked excessively, such that it annoyed and disturbed Mrs. Ms. Reed's neighbors. The last finding of fact is that pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, 157, I find that Mrs. Reed's dog, King, is a nuisance dog. Now, I'll go to the recommendations. It is the recommendation of the hearing officer as follows. King shall not be on a tie outside, unattended, on occasions when Amy Reed is not at home. Should King bark excessively for unreasonable length of time while outside at any time, then he shall be immediately brought inside. If Ms. King is found in violation of this order, King shall be subject to seizure and impoundment by the Milford Police Department. Further, Ms. Reed would be ordered immediately surrendered to the Milford Town Clerk. The license and tags in her possession prohibited, and prohibited from licensing a dog within the Commonwealth for five years. The findings shall be reported to Milford Town Clerk in accordance with General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157. This is signed by Dog Hearing Officer Brian Murray. Yeah, the only thing that struck me, and this is not a comment to the hearing officer, but more a comment to the dog owner. When we tie dogs out for long periods of time and when they're not home, we would expect them to bark. I'm not thinking when I read this, and I wasn't present at the hearing. I'm thinking that dogs are gonna do what dogs do. This is a dog behaving in the way we expect dogs to behave. And it's just too bad the way the existing laws write that we're not writing something for the owner and not the dog. But that's the way the laws work, and I thought the hearing officer brought that out. Any motions? This is a requirement that we approve this, or reject it?
No, and I'd like to echo your comments, because that was well put. I will make a motion to support the recommendations, the four recommendations by the hearings officer.
I would do that as well. That's unanimous. Thank you, Will. Next, we have a recommendation for appointment of an Assistant Zoning Enforcement Officer. In a letter we've received, it's from Richard Villani, Town Administrator. And having received six applications for the position, Building Commissioner John Erickson reviewed the applications and met with three candidates, interviewed three candidates. And after reviewing them, they're folding the recommendation of Erica Robinson to be appointed Assistant Zoning Enforcement Officer. Rick, before we get into this, you know, you'll note that it was my expectation, and should have been captured in the minutes I tried to get that, that the request was that you further three names for us for appointment and not further one. I just want to make note of that, because now we have a name that's been furthered and recommended by both you and John. And I find that in conflict with what I had asked to be done. Go ahead.
Okay, if I may, I didn't mean to cut you off. I do remember the conversation. I do remember that night. But the follow-up to that, as my recollection, was that I was then asked how I would like to proceed, and I indicated that I would be providing one recommendation. Now, no vote was taken on either.
Right.
Of those, so I want to be honest with you there.
And neither with the changes, even not with the changes that we made?
So, you know, so just to, again, I do recall the conversation. I do recall the follow-up conversation. So that's why I proceeded in the manner that I did.
So we'll leave it as a misunderstanding?
So I just want to just clarify, if I could. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. And so I guess my concern, and I'll state these upfront. First of all, I know Erica Robinson. I find her to be a fine person. I have no doubt the claims made, both from the position she represented in her resumes. I would expect her to have done a fine job in the claims business for insurance. But my concerns come from, and you and I have spoken about this, so I just don't want anybody to think this is a surprise to you. My concern comes when we take a person with claims representative experience and we talk about the job description that was originally put forward by the building inspector and yourself, asking for, somebody who was certified as a building inspector. I suppose that if I stretch this, I might find some transferable skills, because certainly claims representative is not always dealing with people in their best of times, making claims for insurance. But beyond that, I just couldn't make the leap, I guess, with the person being represented to having the prerequisite skills that we talked about in our last meeting. I also noticed that there was a limited number of resumes that came in. I wanted to kind of pick your brain and get a thought as to why we'd get so little resumes with so little experience. And get your thoughts on that.
Again, yeah, there were only six resumes, I believe, that were provided to us. Again, I could speculate, but I'm not sure why there were only six. Obviously, the people saw the resume itself and the request and the qualifications. The reason I think she can do the job, I focused on what I thought were the crucial skills. Written communication, verbal communication, and ability to deal with the public. I thought her resume represented that, but more importantly to me, the interview represented that to me. Would I prefer to have someone that could speak a second language? Absolutely. We have someone in my office that has the ability to do that, and it can be a very benefit. But again, she is the interpreter at Town Hall. So that was my focus. I did give some considerations. Should we just repost the thing? Obviously, I did not dismiss that lightly. If I didn't think any of the six were capable of performing the position of Assistant Zoning Enforcement Officer, I wouldn't have advanced a candidate for you, or for the board to consider. So that's the reasoning, and I did talk to John. I did talk to, I picked Laurie's brain a little bit about qualifications and what skills they thought were most important. And they did agree that the written and verbal communication skill and ability to deal with the public and ability to be a little thick-skinned, maybe, at times.
No, I see that.
Is a benefit, and I did see all of these qualities in the candidate that I advanced and that John advanced. So that was the basis for going forward as I, based on my recommendation.
Yeah, see, I don't want to make this about the candidates you put forward. I do want to make it about the position, and I do want to make it about our ability to attract and retain qualified people. So the original, the original job description put forward, talked about a certified individual.
Correct.
I think my recollection of our last meeting was that we kind of talked you out of that, but still talking about the ability.
Working towards it, correct, correct. And this, again, every question asked by the interviewed, we asked was, would they be willing to do this? And do they understand that that's gonna be a requirement of the position? And then they would answer, and then, again, I'm confident that this candidate, again, I know you don't want to make about the candidate, but obviously I'm advancing a candidate, so I need to speak towards it, that's all.
Yeah, and I'm actually disappointed the building inspector's not here, because his hire would be within his office. But having said that, I guess here's my concern. I have a concern about not receiving many applications. I have a concern that the requirement is this person be certified within two years. I also have a concern whether we can, if the salary isn't right, which I want, I'm speculating based on the number of resumes we receive, six resumes. I'm not accustomed to that, and the jobs that we post where I work.
Could have been a factor.
It could be a factor. I've heard at times, you discuss it, I've heard at times others discuss it, I know it to be a factor and, at least a partial factor, in contributing to the loss of the last person. You gotta think, a person's walking away from a pension, or a near pension, at almost 10 years. There's some factors there. I'm not sure a claims representative can be certified in two years. Depending on the people that are advanced, we know the state to be very picky about who they allow into their certification programs.
That's correct.
And their prior building experience and building knowledge plays into that. So a number of years in trade, a number of years applying zoning enforcement. I'm afraid we're setting up, and I'll use the name now. This candidate, Erica, I'm afraid we're setting this person up for failure who's in no way going to be able to get through the state process in two years. And I have to believe that's not a surprise to you or the building inspector. Whereas if you had somebody who was a part-time building inspector in Medway, that person would be more likely to be certified within a short timeframe.
That's a true statement, I guess, yeah.
Do you think that the, if it's not a surprise, and you need to help me here?
Well, again, if I may.
Because Laurie's had a difficult time trying to get certification.
Yeah, I've talked with Laurie on this. I've talked with John on this, and that was a question I had. Do you think that this candidate would be able to undertake this process and succeed in it? And again, I've met her. I've interviewed her. I think she can.
Question was certification.
And I'm talking about certification.
They're gonna have the ability to be certified in two years, where Laurie couldn't after being in the job six years.
Again, maybe that two-year period's not the correct period, but we wanted to give ample time.
That's what we posted.
Yeah, and I think, you know, that's what I would say.
And we already know it, at least in my opinion, not to be capable through the state process in two years. Unless the person came in with requisite skills and a history within the trade to be able to take, to convince the state to take those tests. So I think we're gonna be having the discussion about the candidate in two years and asking what we do if they're not able to be certified. And the only experience I have is in talking with the former Assistant Zoning Enforcement Officer and talking about the difficulty and the number of years it took.
Again, I have talked with Laurie on this myself. I didn't do this in a vacuum.
So let me ask you, what's the, what do you think are the chances, based on history, I guess, demonstrated performance by the state, that we're gonna be able to certify somebody with this level of experience in two years?
Well, I'm hoping that as she's going through the position itself, that she will be able to get herself through the process with John's help, with our help. Again, I've talked with John on this, and I've talked with Laurie on this. Again, I wouldn't have advanced her if I didn't think she had the innate qualities to do this.
Yeah, I'm asking the question about certification, because.
No, I'm talking, when I say this, I mean certification.
So she's gonna accomplish something that Laurie was unable to accomplish?
I really, to be honest with you, I didn't get into why Laurie didn't accomplish it in the timeframe. I have to be honest.
She wasn't allowed by the state to take the test.
And that's a problem, but that's, that could be a problem for any candidate, so I see what you're saying, but yes.
So I understand it.
Yep.
I'll turn it over to Will.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I think you bring up some valid points, and I think this is when, knowing the candidate personally, probably leads me in a comfortable way to go in a direction that maybe I wouldn't if I didn't know the person. I often get criticized for, I guess, speaking on a personal matter, but we grew up together. I've known her for 20 years. I certainly wasn't involved with this process at all. I certainly don't want her, nor do I expect her, to be set up for failure. And I won't be holding her responsible for that if that's the case. I'll leave it at that, because again, she's a very good person. She's a hard worker, very intelligent. And again, I'm just disclosing that I've known her for 20 years, and it's actually a relationship that I hold in very high regard. I think if anyone should be given the chance, Erica is that candidate. I certainly don't know any of the other candidates, like I said. But I think she's very customer-centric. She does have customer service experience over 20 years. And I think that at least pays some dividends in this, in this, in this position. I think it's, I even said this when Laurie was in it, who I also had a very strong personal relationship with, that they do a lot, they deal with a lot, and a lot of different people for not a lot of money. And I think that's another point you brought up that maybe this board needs to look at going forward.
Sure.
But I just want to stress that I think if we were going to take a chance on a candidate, we're taking a chance on one of our own. And, you know, I would like to see her be successful, and I would, and I'm going to make a motion that we appoint her this evening.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and make that motion? I'll second for discussion.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Erica Robertson of 13 Reed Street to the Assistant Zoning Enforcement Officer at the rate of $19.99 an hour, which is great for step one.
I'll second for the purposes of discussion. I'm not gonna be second to the motion, Will, and the primary reason is that from the standpoint of the job description, person doesn't meet the skill set that was established by the building commission, or Building Inspections Department, John Erickson, who originally had requirements that the person be certified. Now, we've talked about the ability of any candidate to be certified within a reasonable period of time and working with the state, and it becomes exponentially harder if somebody doesn't have trade experience or building and zoning enforcement experience. I don't want to set her up for failure. And more importantly, and nor do I think you are, anybody else, I want to make sure this isn't about the candidate. It's about skills, experience, and what we originally posted. We also talked about a strong preference for a second language. We found that to be especially helpful from Laurie Braz's experience, and useful both in the field and in the office. So I'm not going to second for those reasons. And I'm frankly not sure why they might have a candidate who would be unhappy in this position in a couple of years, not having those skills and not being able to become certified and be frustrated by that process. We know how the state looks at that, and we know from Laurie's experience what she tried, so.
If I may?
Go ahead, please.
No, and I appreciate you, you seconding it for discussion. I think when we, when, well, I think, I guess the entire board was somewhat concerned with the first submission of the job description. I, for one, was very outspoken about making it a mandatory requirement that they were bilingual or trilingual, or that they had building, building background, or was, or already licensed or certified, because of the fact that it's not a very high-paying job. And once you have licenses and things like that, I think you're looking for a higher-paying job. So I was concerned from the get-go that we weren't going to be able to get anyone.
Who's already certified.
Who's, yeah, or speaks a language. We can find someone who's bilingual, but maybe they don't have the other skills. I know in this case, you know, she's well-spoken, she's well-written, she's educated. That is the stuff that, that I think is the reason why, you know, I was able to make the motion and support it, because I'm not sure, well, I guess I'm, I'm not sure where we go from here. I guess maybe we can discuss that.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if that's, I mean, I appreciate your candor, but obviously, I'm on my own on this one, so.
So we have a motion that wasn't seconded for the purposes of the recording of the minutes. Now we're talking about where we go from here. Go ahead, Will.
Well, excuse my stuttering. Do we, I mean, do we talk about reposting? Do we talk about different requirements? I mean, I don't know if, you know, if you came, you know, if you have other things on your mind. I just want to make sure, I mean, this isn't a position that we want to go vacant either.
No, no, no. So it's a critical position. You know, I think that you raised some of the right questions when we talk about reposting. If we're going to repost, we're talking about what the appropriate, how we're going to attract candidates that meet the qualifications. And if it's an issue of salary, which we've both discussed here, and I've heard you bring it up, and others bring it up before, Rick, then we need to solve that problem. Because, you know, salary is not emotional for me. Let me, I'll defend any salary. And the reason why I can say that is salary is not determined and not set by the Board of Selectment of Milford, or anybody within the town of Milford. Salary is determined, is set by market conditions. Those market conditions drive whether we're able to attract or retain qualified candidates. I don't want a revolving door in this position. If salary's not, if salary's a consideration for allowing, for having people leave over time, even before their pensions get vested at nine and a half years, I want to understand that. If it's an inhibitor to you, for you to get qualified candidates and qualified resumes applying for the position, then I want to hear that. Because I think this board has an obligation to respond to that, defend increasing the salaries, going to Personnel Board or wherever it is, to say, hey, look, this is one of the hardest jobs this community has. You're not going to make friends. And at less than $20,000, I'm sorry, at less than $40,000 a year, you may only fill it with people, and I noticed that a lot of the applicants, by the way, were administrative people, administrative assistants, secretarial type. That is not this position. In fairness to Erica, I'm not sure it's a claims representative either, that's why I questioned it. And out of respect for you, and specifically John Erickson, the Building Commissioner, I'm not sure how we got from a certified person to a person with absolutely no experience in the role at all. So I haven't been able to make that leap. You were able to make that leap through the interviews. We didn't have three candidates advanced, I would have liked to have seen that. But that said, I think we do need to look over the salary. I think we need to look over what other conditions, whether it's the number of hours. When that position in that office is making less than part-time people sitting next to him or her, there's a problem. I don't know, you have any additional thoughts, Will?
Well, the only thing I would ask, if, if, well, I guess we'll have to come back in a, in a future meeting to see where this is at. I would at least, if we do, well, I guess I can address it if we do move ahead with, with reposting the position that the people that have applied for it, including Erica, have the opportunity to reapply.
Sure, sure. No, I wouldn't preclude that. But I want to get a sense, Rick, what you think this position's worth. I don't want to be stuck in a old salary ranking or rating system. That's not appropriate for the position. Again, the goal should be to attract the best talent with the requisite skills, and then retain them such that we're not, we don't have a revolving door, or they're precluded from gaining the certifications that are required. Because this, that's not a perfunctory thing, right? That's, that's critical to the role in the position. Otherwise, we wouldn't ask that they become certified. Otherwise, John wouldn't have asked that they already were certified in his original request. So, and maybe looking around at surrounding communities. I'd like you to take, to relook at the actual work, to look at the job description. And classification aside, what should that person be paid? I'd also like to have you look at the amount of hours, or anything else that might inhibit our ability to attract someone. Because I can be honest with you, the, beyond a couple of resumes Erica included, the, the others were just not even close. I don't know if that was your observation as well.
Yeah, those were the.
There's three you didn't even interview, because they weren't close.
Wasn't easy, wasn't difficult to get to three.
Okay, all right. I don't know, do you, can you think of anything else that needs to be looked at or understood in an effort to go forward?
No.
Because you're right, we can't leave the position open. All right. We'll go on to the next topic. Next, we have Milford Boosters Club, 5K Turkey Run, permit to obstruct. Is there a motion?
Motion made.
All right, I'll second. That also has the review of police chief. It's a Thanksgiving morning 5K run walk, the Milford High School Boosters Club, and that's approved 2-0. Okay. Next item we have is Milford Youth Football and Cheer, permit to obstruct.
Motion.
Okay, that's from an applicant, contact person Nicole Chesky. Milford Youth Football and Cheer, youth cheerleaders and fundraisers for National Cheer Camp. They would stand in public sidewalks in Milford near businesses to ask for donations. Obviously, they'd have to ask for those businesses' approval, and that's approved by the Chief of Police. That's also approved from the board. Vote of 2 to nothing. Rick, I had made a note at this point to, to bring up that RV situation at the, by Kmart. If you could look to see if they're in compliance with the site plan, that would help me. I think the chief nailed it dead-on. If they would just put it within their law, we're all fine. Okay, next, we have correspondence. I'm sorry, do you have any, you have any business?
Yeah, actually, this is something that I think that there's been a lot of sidebars over the years, and even town meeting debate. But I do take my office hours seriously, and I've had a, considering a decent, a decent number of visitors each, each month. There was a couple individuals that came in in October, and then I don't know if they're related because of conversation, or if there was just coincidental, but I ended up getting two follow-up emails as well regarding our full-service versus self-service stance here in the town of Milford. That's something that even when you're running for office in Milford, we always get asked about. And these folks just simply asked, would I bring up the topic for discussion again, or how that topic gets to the point where a decision is debated? And I talked to, I talked to them about any resident of Milford who's registered to vote could bring up an article. But also, Rick, if I could, or Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask the town administrator just to compile whatever historical data for, for, for me, that I could kind of see where we've, where we've been on that. I remember being at a town meeting, a member in the past, where I voted to remain with full service. The argument has always been, to the, to my best recollection, it's just something here, you know, in Milford that we have done historically, mainly looking out for those of our population with disabilities and our, and our elders. But obviously, other towns handle it. When I seem to be elsewhere, I, I seem to be pumping my own gas. So I was just hoping that we could get a little historical data and have that conversation. And, you know, I know where I've been in the past, and just, I just want to make sure that when people do have a legitimate, a legitimate concern, and it wasn't a gripe, they were looking for historical data, that we have that discussion.
Yeah, I think you captured the two largest issues. And what I recall, I have to go back a number of years when it was reaffirmed, the self-service gas stations in Milford, that it was primarily, we were looking out for the ability of our senior citizens or our disabled drivers to make sure they got full service. Now, the option in most gas stations is if you sit there and beep, the intent is that somebody who's pouring coffee or selling items with the new type of service stations, then breaks away from that duty to come out and pump gas. I don't know how well that'd work, but, you know, I think we could get it on the topic. It's really a planning issue, but there's no reason why the Board of Selectment can't talk it and refer to planning if we wanted to ask them to review it.
Well, that alone, I don't mean to interrupt, but that alone is even good to know, because I wasn't sure, you know, again, when it was, I'm trying to remember, I've been at town meetings since I was 19 years old. I'm trying to remember how long ago it was when it was actually the last time debated on town meeting floor.
A while ago.
Yeah, and whether or not it was.
Time to revisit.
Well, time, a time to revisit. I don't even know if my stance has changed on it, quite honestly.
Right, right.
But I do think when, it is, it is something that has often come up in conversation, especially with our gas stations that are right on 495 and things of that nature. So I guess I just want to get better educated on it myself. And then if it's something that this board supports, sending it to planning to see where they are, if anything's changed. Or if this board doesn't support it, then at least, you know, the conversation has been had.
Fire chief probably be involved also.
Yeah.
I remember it was that there was some issues, I don't recall what they were, though.
What I recall is it basically being a belief, based on experience, that people who were trained and transferred the fuel on a regular basis would be better understanding of the safety caution, concerns and aspects, and felt that that was much safer than, you know, everybody who's got a license now being, you know, as safe as the gas station attendant. It was a belief that it was safer.
I think folks too that maybe, you know, moved, moved here in the last 10 to 15 years, you know, I know that that's one of their first things that they asked for, because they don't know the history. And quite, and quite honestly, at this point, I'm forgetting the history.
Right, you're right.
If that's something that you'd entertain, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, let's see, put it on a future agenda item, and let's have the discussion. Whether we'd want to revisit it, whether we'd want to refer to planning, whether we'd want a further discussion, at least all get our points of view across, I think.
Yeah, and even hearing if need be from the police chief and the fire chief, and that may, you know, that may end it right there, but at least we're, we're talking about it.
George, do you have anything else, Will?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay. We have correspondence from the Building Commissioner related to Task Force Monthly Report. We also have a resignation from Frances O'Neill from the Commission on Disability. There's no actionable item for us from the Building Commissioner, however, with the departure of Frances O'Neill on the Disability Commission, I think we'd be required to accept that resignation with regret. So if I could have a motion.
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation from Frances O'Neill from the Milford, Milford Commission on Disability.
I'd second that, that's unanimous. Will, I mean, Rick, it's my recollection that this board has had some resignations. I'm wondering if you could get to the board through any means possible, even in our mail slot. The number of openings on this board, if we have to relook at it or not.
We can get you a list of what's open and what's there, yeah.
I just want to make sure that they're able to meet, meet their quorums. As we get into the holiday seasons and whatnot, people have other things, and sometimes just one absence will mess up an ability to get a quorum.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
With that, you just remind me that, can we just get an updated, also an updated list of, from the Talent Bank of?
We'll combine that list for you, what's open and what's.
Okay, yeah.
Who's interested.
For all the other, for the other. I don't think we have many vacancies on other boards, but I'd like to at least stay on top of that.
Yeah, we can combine the.
Great.
The list for you.
And there is no scheduled executive session?
No.
So that will conclude the business of this board this evening. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, that's unanimous. Thank you, everyone, and good evening.